I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I need to read the following. I would like to make it clear for the record of the, for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this planning commission meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, in that Commissioner Alderetti will be participating in the planning commission meeting via speakerphone. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. Please bear with me while I briefly go through some of the procedures required by the Brown Act. I would now like to request that Commissioner Alderetti respond to the following questions. One, Commissioner Alderetti, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
I was.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Thank you.
Is said agenda posted at the location where you currently are?
Yes.
Is this location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No, there is none.
Okay. I would now like to ask that any member of the planning commission speak up at this time, if such Commissioner has not been able to, has not been able to clearly hear Commissioner Alderetti. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all commissioners present have indicated that they were able to hear Commissioner Alderetti clearly. I would next request that any commissioner, including Commissioner Alderetti, speak up at this time, if such Commissioner has any reason to believe based on voice recognition or otherwise, that the person representing himself to be Commissioner Alderetti is not truly so. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that no commissioner has expressed doubt that Commissioner Alderetti is participating by teleconference along with the planning commissioners present here. I would now like to advise the planning commission and the secretary that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. With that, Madam Secretary, will you please proceed with the roll?
Here.
Ms. Sarah.
Present.
Here.
James Gardner.
Sean Bell.
Here.
Martha McLaughlin.
Here.
Janet Reno.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is the consent calendar, which includes the minutes from our February 8 regular meeting. Is there any corrections, or I will take them, take a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner McLaughlin, a second from Commissioner Reno. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six zero with Commissioner Gartner absent. The next item on the agenda is communication, Commissioner Communication Disclosure Regarding Agendaized Items. Do anybody, do any of the commissioners have any just communication disclosures that they need to make at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing. Give me a moment while I find my script for that.
The public hearing is night, so do we have, do we have any communications on these items, two items? We're going to handle it a little differently tonight. We have one presentation, because the two items are very similar. There will be one step presentation on both items, and then you will be asked to deliberate and, or at least to act on themselves.
Okay.
So, what's written communication, if I follow up, actually, so.
This is the time and place for the public hearing on item numbers one and two, which are conditional use permits 2016-01 and 2016-02. If you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. The action of the planning commission is final, following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the San Antonio Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with a clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the planning department within ten days from the date of the commission's action, or unless set for public hearing by the city council. Staff, please, will now make the presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Before you're here tonight, our conditional use permits number 2016-1 and 2016-2 for respective locations at 1236 West Civic Center, Unit C, and 2639 West Edinger Avenue. A little bit of the description. This is for an onsite sale of beer and wine at two existing restaurant locations. The applications require individual CUPs to allow the type 41 ABC license that is being proposed. I will first go into the conditional use permit 2016-1, and then further into the dash two. So, the first ABC license is being proposed at the 1236 West Civic Center, Unit C. It is in a planned shopping center zoning designation, and is surrounded by commercial uses and residential uses. This is the site plan for the proposed area. It occupies two units that were combined into one. And this is the floor plan for the proposed alcohol storage. As you can see, it's a four-by-four refrigerator, very minimal, less than five percent, less than one percent. And this is the site photo of the location. The next CUP, 2016-2, is located at 2639 West Edinger Avenue. The zoning designation out there is neighborhood commercial, C1, and is also surrounded by mostly commercial and some residential uses to the north. This is the proposed site plan, well, it's an existing site, site plan of the proposed location for ABC. Existing restaurant has been there since 2008. And this is the floor plan. As you can see, it's also proposing minimal storage of alcohol. And a site photo of the entrance. A little bit of the project analysis. The sites both meet all alcohol-related standards from the municipal code. The projects will provide additional dining amenities to residents and visitors, and the standards ensure that the facilities will remain eating establishments and will not become attractive nuisances. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2016 for the location at 1236 West Civic Center Drive, Unit C, and also recommends approval of conditional use permit 2016-2 for location 2639 West Edinger Avenue. With that, I conclude my presentation. I am available for any further questions.
Thank you, Ivan. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. How long have these two businesses been in operation prior to their application?
These locations have been in operation since early 2015.
Okay.
They both opened around the same time, and they've taken over locations that were previously restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reno?
On the property at Civic Center, I noticed that the signage has not been updated. Is that part of the conditions for it?
Yes, so the applicant and the owner are aware that signage needs to be brought up to code. It's something that we're working on currently, and it's also, could be amended as part of the conditions of approval tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I have, thank you. I have one speaker card, which is the applicant, Alex Wu. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Wu, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Vice Chair, Honorable Commissioners. As noted by Minister Ivan Orozco, the two locations have been existing restaurants since early 2015. Over the course of the past year or so, being in operation, they felt that offering beer and wine will be, just to be able to complement the diner's experience, and also be able to, be able to just appease many requests that they have received over the past year or so. As noted by the square footage, and the seating capacity, and the hours of operation, it's indicative of a bona fide sit-down, full-service restaurant, and we tend to keep it the way it is, and definitely not attract any nuisance activities to the locations. We are currently in the process of applying to the ABC, so only thing at this point that's outstanding is the approval from the planning commission. Prior to that, we have already received preapproval from the ABC department, saying that both locations are fit and suitable for the type 41 beer and wine license. If there's any questions, I may answer this question.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Just, if I could, just to follow up on Commissioner Reno's comment.
Yes, sir.
Where are we in regards to the signage?
Um, it was just, well, thank you, please.
As far as the signage, I've actually met with the owner and explained to him the limitations on window signage, and also that the wall signs need to be submitted with the application. He's aware of what needs to be submitted to the city, and also the regulations for the size and the design of the wall signs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
If no one else would like to address the commission, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and/or a motion.
You would take one, each action separately?
Commissioner Reno?
There's no comments from any of the other commissioners. I'd like to, to make a motion on the, on the first item with the amended, with an amended item for the signage. Is there, can we put a certain timeline on that, or how would we condition the signage?
Depending on how aggressive you want to be, you can have it be contingent with the prior to operation of the alcohol license. You could have contingent on that, or you could place a two-month period on it, or three-month period.
I prefer that, that the, that the, the CUP be contingent on the signage being upgraded, so that puts a little pressure on them to have it done as quickly as possible.
We have a motion from.
Just a comment?
Can, can, uh, do, can we get a?
Just a second.
Second. And then, no.
On the, for the signage, I understood from what Ivan was saying was that maybe there's some code enforcement issues as well with the signage, is that right?
Well.
During the process for the conditional use permit applications, it was something that was brought up after the fact, and doing site inspections. When I did my site visits of the location, it was when it was mentioned to the applicant. As a courtesy, it was almost like a warning to let them know that code enforcement is active out there, and trying to avoid that case and submit as soon as possible. And as you mentioned, it could be contingent upon approval for the ABC license and the CUP. So, he is aware that it is a problem, and it can be a bigger nuisance than, than it is now.
Is there going to list, do I need any?
No. I actually walked the site with the business owner at the Civic Center location, and explained to him exactly what the issues were. So, he is fully aware of the, the issues, and what he needs to bring down a little bit on the window signage, and also get the, the permanent wall signage approved through the city, not only the planning department, but the building department as well.
I have a question, so.
Yes.
Even if he didn't apply for the CUP, this would all be required to be fulfilled, correct?
Right.
So, conditioning it really would be redundant at this point, because by code, he'd be required to fulfill these things, correct?
So, something like this, where the signage is out there, would be a code enforcement issue. I know that our code enforcement department's overwhelmed at the moment, and that's probably the reason why it wasn't brought up beforehand after, oh.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, yes, your, the answer to your question is correct, that regardless of the CUP, they will have to comply with the code, and code enforcement will continue with or without this condition.
So, regardless of the condition, the same process would be applied?
The same process would be applied.
I mean, not that I don't appreciate trying to hold them to it, but I just, at the same time, don't want to have you guys do a redundant condition that we already know is already applicable based on the code, so.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
My, my simple question is, is this a planning commission, a planning code, or is it a building code?
It's a planning zoning code. Part of the signage, yes.
The signage, so it's a planning, building, okay, so it's not, okay.
Candida?
The advantage to implying it as a condition is that in that way, you would have a trigger. Code enforcement actions can take quite a while to have a response made to them, and so if you, the applicant would, if you are concerned about there not being the sign up there now, you may want to condition, make it a condition of approval.
If I may, I would recommend that if you were going to add a condition, that you just add a condition that says that the, the applicant will do everything to be in compliance with the code requirement, including the removal of any code violations. That way, if you keep it broad like that, then we can, and then that, as long as code enforcement actually signs off that they are taking appropriate steps to comply, then we can work with them to make sure that they get their, their conditional use permit. Sometimes the sign application might take longer, but if they submitted a sign application and do that process, that we could still work with the business.
The, just for clarification, the owner has not been cited yet, so there's only been a warning letter. There's been no citation.
If I may, I, I tend to agree with, with Commissioner Reno in that it kind of, it kind of turns up the heat a little more, maybe the, it'll show there's a little more seriousness in that the, that the owner of the building understands that complying with this is going to help his tenant get to where he wants to be quicker. And I think it's just, you know, they're here before us tonight, and we're trying to clean up certain issues in the city, and if this is a way we can get it handled a little bit quicker, even if it's a few days quicker, if this is a way to get it done quicker, I think that, that I would agree with Commissioner Reno, that we should do that. So.
So, may I ask for?
Commissioner Bauer?
I, I just had a question, because there's two things here. I mean, there's the applicant who we have before us, but we don't have the landlord before us. So, how do we condition the landlord's compliance with code enforcement? I mean, I'd like to do that. I mean, that's, I'd like to kill two birds with one stone if I can.
The staff is telling me that it's the same tenant, so the same applicant is also the tenant that has a code violation. In this case, that makes sense, because whether we send it to the landlord or to the applicant, the, the compliance is with, really with the applicant, so.
Okay, very good.
So, I just want to make sure I get clarification. So, the motion before us is to approve for the Civic Center location, and what was the additional condition?
Is it that the CUP is contingent on them, on their signage being up to code?
So, so just so I'm clear, I want to make sure I understand this. So, we're saying that we're not going to allow this business to get their CUP until they fix the signage?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because it sounded like before was, they're going to have to fix their sign no matter what, but what we're saying here with that motion is that they will not be able to serve beer and wine until they fix the sign, okay? Okay.
So, I have, is there any other discussion on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Reno, a second from Commissioner McLaughlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought we had to do a roll call based on what you said in the beginning.
Okay, uh, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do roll call vote. Commissioner Alderetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Aye.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Reno?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes six zero with Commissioner Gartner absent. Now, we will take up 2016-02. Do I have a, is there any comments regarding item number two? If not, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Bauer?
Is this the same situation with the signage, then, so?
Yes, it is.
All right, very good.
So, are you to move?
I would move that we adopt or a resolution approving CUP 2016-02 with the condition that we imposed previously, that they comply with the signage requirements.
I'll second that. Is there any other discussion regarding this? Okay, with that, go for Commissioner McLaughlin.
Be consistent with what we did before, would be before they would get the CUP.
That, that is correct, so, yes.
That they bring, so the motion we have before us is that we will approve the CUP contingent upon them bringing their sign up to code.
That's correct.
Okay, and a motion from Commissioner Bauer, a second from myself. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Alderetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Aye.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Reno?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six zero with Commissioner Gartner absent. Thank you. With that, we will move on to work-study session, which is candida, planning, and building agency work plan.
Vice Chair Bill?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have to leave now, I've got to get to leave, so I'll be down here.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for, for joining us tonight, and so let the record reflect that Commissioner Alderetti is leaving at 5:52 PM.
Before you guys begin, is there a way to switch on the TV down here?
Screen.
Pardon me? The, the screen down here?
It's not working? And I'm sorry, but the agenda was a little bit incorrect, in that we, it's not the whole agency's work program. It's just the planning divisions, although it may feel like it's the whole divisions, or the whole agency's work program when we get into it. Okay. Okay. Overview. We have a number of items that we have to look at this year in terms of what, what we're looking at doing. Some of them are going to be based on streamlining our development process, and this has been a directive from the council, that they want us to relook at our codes and how we do business, so that we can encourage business. The next thing is reformatting, digiting codes, and maps, and application forms. These are some of the things that Commissioner Becerra has talking, talked about, and that we are going to be working on this year as part of this streamlining process. It's going to be a comprehensive approach. Then, the general plan update process. In conjunction with that, we'll be looking at new code amendments to implement the general plan update, as well as the design guidelines. And then we have some code amendments and new ordinances that we want to or need to look at. The ones that we need to look at have been directed by the state. The ones that we want to look at, we'll talk about a little bit later, but we feel like additional regulations in certain areas would better support city goals. And finally, as you may have heard, we have been approved to have a number of new staffs and staff members, so we're in the hiring process right now, and we're developing a comprehensive program for staff training and development. On the streamlining and reformatting, we're looking at, again, we're looking at revising our timelines to be consistent with state deadlines, to make sure that things are going through in a reasonable method. We've also gone through a code, zoning code reformatting. Our code now is a traditional 1950s, updated 1970s kind of code, and it's all taxed. And many of the codes today are put out in matrix form. They're more easily read by developers and property owners, so we're trying to reformat, format, format that. In addition, they'll be digitized for better online viewing. Again, we're looking at digitizing application forms, so that they can submit without the need to print them. These are things that, excuse me, these are things that other communities do, and that, and that we are working on doing as well. Probably our biggest component is the general plan update. This is a huge project, and we are doing it predominantly in-house. Typically, communities hire outside consultants to come in and draft the plan, work with the community, but we have a very strong community-based planning program and the infrastructure to do this, and we're excited about getting the staff to do it. It's, it's really kind of a planner's dream, to be able to do a general plan update, and particularly for planners that, that work for cities, it's fairly uncommon for them. Usually, they're project, they serve as project managers, and it's exciting, and the staff is really committed to it. So, we're looking forward to that. That is going to be a year and a half process. While we're doing that, we'll be looking at updating the land use districts, and we may hire specific consultants to do technical studies, such as air quality, greenhouse gas studies, that type of thing, traffic. But for the most part, the policies will be done in-house, as well as the public participation. Code amendments. Now, on the code amendments, we have a few that we need to look at, just in terms of new state laws. One of the most important ones, and one of those things that relates back to that development processing stuff, getting on a timeline, is the wireless communications facilities. The state has responded to the wireless communications industry's request to reduce the timelines for reviewing those, and so they've mandated that we look at processes. There is like 20-day review periods, applications are due and complete. It's quite extensive, and we need to get on it right away. Another thing that we have promised the community is to look at a second dwelling unit ordinance, as well as our parking ordinance, which, as you know, we come to often with these parking, shared parking exceptions, these variances, the goal, the, there's a number of uses that our parking ordinance just doesn't fit for, so we'll be looking at those, as well as sober living facilities, small lot subdivisions, and probably going through some sign stuff. The updated codes, those ones on the bottom are the ones that will be, receive the highest priority. Oh, and in addition to that, I have to add, updating the ordinance, and we'll be looking at the massage ordinance. That's one that was inadvertently left out. The city, the state, a number probably, I don't know, eight years ago, the state took away local agencies' ability to regulate massage ordinances. For the most part, it was almost entirely. Since then, there has been a, as of January 1st, we have the opportunity to take back some of that control of, and require CUPs again for massage. So, we want to get our ordinance in compliance with local, with the state revised provision, so that we can enact that as quickly as possible. Again, we've been directed by the city council to update and extend the Metro East mixed-use overlay zone, which we're excited about that, particularly because it's going to give us an opportunity to kind of create some standard like, standard. light, standardized districts that can be used in the implementation of some of our other specific plans. We'll be looking at implementing the transit zoning code, parking in Luffy, as well as upgrading, and this, although this doesn't apply to you, you should, you should know that, we have been a certified local government city for historic preservation in the past. And because of budget and staffing constraints, we have not been able to do that before, but we're looking at renewing that status and are hoping to submit that application this spring. We're excited about that. Our staff, staff efforts, our new staff, we will have new, three new senior planners, two associate planners, two assistant planners, and two planning, part-time planning technicians. So we're establishing an internship work program. We're really excited about working with some of the local colleges that have planning programs to bring, bring students in on a part-time basis so that we can work with them on training and they can help us out as a win-win situation. Other than that, that concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to address them.
Thank you. Any questions for Candida?
I have one.
Commissioner Basera?
I love the fact that you guys are going to bring in interns. That's always a good thing. Are you guys going to be paying them, or will they be working just for credit or?
At this point, we're looking at credit.
Okay. And then the other question is, you mentioned the parking in Luffy. Do we know if that fee goes into something more specific as it relates to transportation, or is that a general fund?
It, oh.
The parking in Luffy would go to the, to a particular fund established by the parking fund to be, to be used to provide new parking in the future.
Okay. And it is limited to that specific district, the transit zoning code district?
We might start looking at it citywide, though. That's a really good question.
Yeah, at this time.
Any other question? Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Couple of questions on, on the manpower. The manpower that you reflected here, is that in the budget, or is that in next year's budget?
You're asking if the?
The manpower that you listed here on the slide.
The positions, the positions for the general plan were actually approved at the beginning of this fiscal year, but they will be budgeted in the personnel department's budget in the next council meeting, hopefully. And then all of the rest of the positions have been in various different phases of the budget. They have been allocated and they're slowly trickling in. We, we are, we hope that by mid-March, we'll have all of those positions approved. Then we can fill those positions.
So it is part of this year's budget?
This is part of this year's budget and next year's budget, yes.
Okay. And then my next question is, how does this impact the backlog that you've got in place?
Well, that's a very good question, because initially, when I came on board about seven, eight months ago, a certain amount of money was set aside for the general plan update. The general plan update, at that point, they told me somewhere around one to $2 million for over two years for the general plan. If we wanted to hire consultants to do the general plan update, it would have taken four years and maybe $5 million.
Sure.
So instead, we revamped the program. We are adding staff. Once the staff comes in and we look at the backlog, we will, we'll give you a better sense of that. At this point, we have only been able to add Ms. Neal to the, to the planning division staffs since I arrived. That's really the only position we have filled. All these positions, once they come in, we'll assess the workload and we'll give you a report back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. In regards to the general plan update, I know that we have a subcommittee of this commission, and we were scheduled to meet last month, or maybe earlier this month. Where are we in regards to that?
Well, we have, that was, we're going to be talking about that. Right now, we don't have any drafts, but we will be, what we will prob, we will be using you much more effectively on these code, initially, on the code amendments. So those, we are anticipating getting out next month. So you will be meeting then.
Okay.
And we have, as you can tell, we have a lot of code amendments coming up. And so I think we anticipated getting, the first one that will be on your plate will be the massage ordinance. And that, we're anticipating getting to you next month.
In regards to that, I believe we took that up, I want to say, maybe six to eight years ago here.
Exactly, yes. You took it up six or eight years ago, you adopted it, and within two months of adoption, or three months, the state pulled local regulatory authority on massage ordinances. So yes.
And now they're giving it back to us?
Now, they're giving it back to us with some conditions on it. So.
Incremental.
We're massaging the massage ordinance.
It was an interesting meeting, to say the least.
Yeah, so that it will fit the current state requirements.
No other questions? Thank you. With that, we'll move to excused absences, of which we have one for Chairman Gartner. Have a motion to excuse his absence?
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner McGlaughlin, a second from Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Bauer, we're going to take a roll call.
Aye.
Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Basera?
Aye.
Commissioner Verino?
Aye.
Aye. That approved five-nothing with Commissioners Gartner and Alder Ready absent. That, staff comments. Do we have any comments from staff?
Yes, I do. I had a request from Commissioner Basera about email addresses, and I wanted to report back to all of you on it. I didn't get a chance to talk to you today. We did a little research on it, because I wanted to make sure it wasn't intentional, that previously, your email addresses, if you wanted, were listed on our city website, so that if people wanted to contact you, they could do so. Those email addresses were pulled, have been removed, and it was intentional. And it was based on the recommendation of legal counsel. There is a, there is a court case which is being held at the Supreme Court level right now. It's still up there, doing whatever it's doing. And the interpretation of that would mean that if your email address was online, all of your personal emails would be subject to discovery if there was any kind of court case or legal action. So the city attorney's policy on that is to not have emailed addresses listed on the website. So we're going to continue operating in the way that we have. If an applicant or a member of the public wants to contact, you know, a planning commissioner specifically from their district, they will contact Karen and Karen will get them in contact with you.
Which court case is it?
San Jose versus somebody.
Original case was Ted Smith versus the City of San Jose. It was appealed and now it's in the Supreme Court, and it's the City of San Jose versus Supreme Court.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Is there any way, is there any consideration of putting together email addresses that would come through your server that could be accessed by the commissioners?
I think the city attorney has, I guess the issue is that if it, even if they're business and city email addresses, all the email addresses could be discoverable. So that, that is the ruling that our city attorney has made on this, because both email addresses somehow become discoverable.
It would be subject to disclosure in public records.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand the point.
It's the San Jose City Council and all commissioners.
All right, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, commission, commissioner comments. Commissioner Basera?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just wanted to say for all of us, congratulations. At OCTA, their board adopted the revised bus program this morning. We were about to lose two routes and they've replaced it with a circular route. The frequency hasn't changed from what we originally had, but it's better than losing the two routes through some of the areas of the city that desperately rely on some of this transportation. And another thing from OCTA is they're going to be studying the Central Harbor Boulevard Transit Corridor. It's going to stretch, I'm not quite sure if it's from First Street or 17th. It's hard to tell, because one thing says one thing and a map shows another thing. But nonetheless, it's going to affect Santa Ana, at the very least from where the OC Streetcar will terminate. And they're going to have a meeting tomorrow night up in Fullerton at 5:00, and then they will have one more closer to us at Garden Grove High School on Thursday evening at 5:00 PM. So you and anybody else that would like to attend, I would encourage it. That's it for me.
Commissioner Verino?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Bauer? Commissioner McGlaughlin? All right, nothing. Okay, with that, we are adjourned until our next meeting, March the 14th. Thank you.
Till March, adjourned till March 18th, or 28th, please.
Oh, it's canceled?
Yes.
It's canceled? Okay, so March 28th?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.